Hello, everyone. We are going to start our work session this evening on the budget. Jonathan Melton is absent and excused. So, thank you.
All right. Well, good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mayor. Good afternoon, members of City Council and City Manager. I'm Sadiya Satar, the Director of Budget and Management Services. This is our last budget work session before the manager's proposed budget presentation to council next month, and we promise it will be jam-packed. Today, we will kick-start the budget session with a presentation from Budget and Management Services staff to include updates on agency grants, followed by a presentation from Susan Steed from HR on results and recommendations from analyses conducted on the city's compensation plan. BMS staff will then return to present the city's five-year capital improvement plan and proposed fees for the upcoming fiscal year. Finally, we will end this work session with a presentation from Matt Courier from Raleigh Parking on proposed changes to parking fees for the upcoming fiscal year. So, given that we have a very short period of time together and a lot to discuss, I will now pass it over to Kirsten Larson in the Budget Office to talk to you all about the proposed grants for fiscal year 2024.
Kirsten Larson, Budget Management Services. Today, agency grant recommendations from arts, community enhancement, and human service grant categories will be presented. The Agenda backup includes detailed information, which I will refer to during the presentation. So, before the recommendations are presented, here are a few of key policies that apply to all agency grant categories. Approved by council in January 2015, the 25% maximum policy states that the maximum level of funding that can be requested is 25% of an agency's total actual operating expenses for the last completed fiscal year. In July 2018, council approved a policy that allows agencies to be awarded in only two grant categories. And since fiscal year 10, the city has required agencies requesting $25,000 or more to submit an audit, which is reviewed by the Finance Department. This table indicates the total amount of funding allocated for each grant category in fiscal year 24 and the funding source. The total allocation for arts includes funding for agency grants, the Raleigh Arts Plan, Arts Commission programming, and agreements with the Carolina Ballet, North Carolina Symphony, Raleigh Little Theater, and Theater in the Park. And then the other two categories that you see, community enhancement and human service grant funding, are for agency grants and additional funding. We'll start with the arts grants category, which starts on page one of the Agenda backup. And this is a high-level overview of the arts grants process. So, in late fall, applications are available. During January and February, applications are reviewed and scored by the Raleigh Arts Commission Grants Committee and panelists. In March, recommendations are presented to the full commission, and then final recommendations are presented to council now in April. David Clegg, Raleigh Arts Commission Chair, and Tony Gadston, Raleigh Arts Commissioner and Chair of the Grants Committee, will now share the commission's arts grant recommendations for fiscal year 24.
Good afternoon. I'm David Clegg, Chairman of the Arts Commission. And with me is Tony Gadston, the Chair of the Grants Committee, and of course, Sarah Corin, who directs that function for the Arts Commission, and Sarah Powers, the Director of Arts. What we do here in Raleigh with granting the full range of artistic expression in this community sets us in a percentile beyond most allegedly artistic-friendly cities. What you have before you is a discussion of granting about $2 million to 35 individual arts entities, which cover the entire spectrum of expression and of community, decidedly so. This opportunity gives us the chance to make sure that all communities in this city, people with disabilities, or special ways of experiencing and understanding the arts, and people living under substantial economic circumstances can all access and enjoy the arts. And to do that in a city that is growing quickly will also color the opportunity for me to come back to see you again in about the 18th, when we talk about the ARPA funding and about the need in a growing city of Raleigh for folks to have places to perform art and to show art and for us to experience art. As you see from your Grants Committee recommendation, we are asking for a waiving of the 25% maximum policy as we -- for last year, we asked for 14. This year, we're asking for six, because those entities are still coming back from the pandemic. They're still rebuilding their audiences. They're still returning to audience environments that allow for greater utilization of space and of talent. If that were not done this time, four organizations would have been required to request less than their former budget amount, and you would have had arts organizations returning to a funding base somewhere between $5,800 and $26,500 less than the year before. I am thrilled that I get to tell you this year that we have new applicants, and we have funded new applicants. The point of arts funding, grants funding in the city of Raleigh is not simply to continue to fund the usual suspects, but to grow and to plant seeds and to make sure that growth occurs. That has happened in three instances this year. One of them is the Diamante Arts and Cultural Center, which highlights Hispanic culture through visual art exhibitions. Another is Shop Space, which is a unique makerspace dedicated to making metalwork accessible to beginners. We want folks to be able to have these experiences so that they can move forward in our remarkable art centers that provide metalworking and other types of artistic expression. And thirdly, the Pure Life Theater, which is a nonprofit best known for sittering on African-American culture and history. I will point out to you that the folks on the list have been vetted through a very rigorous process that involved Ms. Gadston and her commission and folks from the community. The full range of artistic expression has been taken into consideration. The breadth of the art is remarkable. What is going on in Raleigh is a creative revolution. You see this from the extent of arts opportunities. I'll be glad to answer any specific questions, but we do offer these up to you with the one proviso, and am excited to see growth and to see expansion in opportunities to have artistic expression that brings the city of Raleigh, as I said before, into a very rarefied universe of municipalities who truly support, appreciate, and grow the arts.
Thank you.
Any questions? Mayor Portman?
I just want to say thank you for the work that you and the committee, you all, do each year. I know how time-consuming it is, with my wife being a former Chair of the Art Commission as well. So, I just want to take the time and say thank you for your work.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Keep up the good work.
Now, John Niffenegger from the Housing and Neighborhoods Department will now provide an overview and recommendations in the community enhancement category, and this information starts on page 16 of the Agenda backup.
Good afternoon. I'm John Niffenegger with Housing and Neighborhoods. Each year, we administer a competitive request for proposals for the Community Development Block Grant. This program is funded with federal community -- the Community Enhancement Grant Program is funded with federal community development block grant dollars. And the funding is awarded to nonprofits providing public services to low and moderate-income Applications are due in January, after which a review committee consisting of staff from the Housing and Neighborhoods Department reviews and scores the applications as outlined in the RFP. For fiscal year 2324, these are the four agencies recommended for funding, and we'll be providing such services as bridge housing for homeless families, helping former foster youth secure housing, and providing services to at-risk youth. Any questions?
I have one question about the Green Chair Project. Can you explain, they went from major, well, request, and then nothing. So, I was just kind of curious.
You wanted to know what the request was for?
Yes, and why?
They requested $60,000, I believe it was for providing necessary furnishings for formerly homeless families. And the review committee did like their application, but they scored lower than the ones recommended for funding. Some of the questions answered, they wanted more detail on relating how they were going to target the clientele, handle intake, and as well as how they were going to deliver the services.
Could we get some follow-up on that?
Sure.
Thank you. Mayor Portman?
Thank you for the presentation. My question is around funding. I see that we had almost $700,000 worth of requests, but there's only $200,000 there. So, you're saying this money comes from the federal government?
Yeah, this is -- the Community Enhancement Grant is funded with community development block grant dollars. We are allowed to use a portion of the total community development block grant award, I think it's 15%, to fund what's known as public services, which these agencies would fall under.
Okay. Can we, Madam Manager, can we see what we can do to get more than 15% able to allocate it? Maybe some conversations with the federal government, or maybe they need to give us more money so we can have a bigger --
Good luck with that.
-- point of 15%. So, I mean, a closed mouth doesn't get fed. So, if we can at least ask and see what we can do, because the need is great, but we're limited by the bucket.
Yes, and the feds have not changed a lot of their policies for years and years and years, and we're living in a different world. We've had those discussions, and it seems to have fallen on deaf ears. So, Councilmember Jones?
Looking at the amount of people that applied, is this the largest year with the most applicants?
I would have to go back further than the past three years, but I know for the past three years, we had the most applicants. We had 15 total this year. Typically, it's around 12 to 13. I'd have to go back and check what the dollar amount was for last year.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
The Human Service Grants information starts on page 28 of the Agenda backup. And here is a quick overview of the human service grant process. Applications are available in December, and in January, they are reviewed and scored by the Human Relations Commission Grants Committee. In February, recommendations are presented, excuse me, to the full commission. And then in April, you all receive the final recommendations that will be presented to you by the HRC Chair, and that is Byron Laws. He will now share the commission's human service grant recommendations for fiscal year 24.
I'm Byron Laws, Chair of the Human Relations Commission.
Good afternoon. I'm Byron Laws, Chair of the Human Relations Commission. As was just explained in regards to the timeline here, Jim Mello was the Chair of our Grant Committee this year, so he spearheaded getting us organized to start the process of how we would go about allocating the funds to the Human Services Agency that applied. We had close to 50 organizations that applied, and there were only four organizations that applied that we did not grant money to, and those were for missing things in their applications. And staff did follow up with them to try to receive the information needed before giving them back to us. So it wasn't something where staff or us decided that because the information was missing, we wouldn't try to get it from them so that they could still receive an opportunity to apply. Follow-up and communication was made, and just some of that stuff we never received in order to move forward in that process. So those were four organizations. And then there was also a few other organizations that received money, human services organizations that are kind of grandfathered in, and some, I know what was communicated was in the past, these organizations would still complete an application with HRC through our grant process, but this year, those organizations didn't all submit applications. But we also know that, I guess, it's like grandfathered kind of thing, where they still receive money from the human services, I guess, part of money. So that's CASA, Healing Transition, Interact, Interfaith, Food Shuttle, Legal Aid, and TLC. So in the past, what was explained is that they would still submit an application for our grant process, but they didn't this year. So I just wanted to kind of clarify that. And pretty much, we wrapped this up last month. The commissioners who were able to allocate time and had the capacity to serve on the Grant Committee, they did serve, and we met, we pretty much partnered up on the commission with somebody who was on the Grant Committee before, with a new commissioner who may not have been on grants before. So if they had any questions reviewing applications, they had a go-to person. Before, we had our final meeting all together with those committee members. The partners met separately to make sure they were, if they had any questions or needed more details in regards to their review, they could kind of bounce off each other before us meeting as a group and finally deciding how that money would be allocated to the different organizations that applied. I think this year's process was a little different just because of Jim. He did chair the group, so it was really one of those things where we just wanted to make sure that we completed the process in time and that we all felt comfortable with it being that there was, in years past, there's always been like a formal Grant Committee. This year, there wasn't necessarily a formal Grant Committee within the commission. It was more so, we know this needs to take place, who has the capacity to help to get this done, and that was the approach we took with Jim's leadership. That's really it. I don't know what questions you all have. If there are specific questions that you have from some of the breakdown and charts, I'll do my best to answer them. And that's pretty much all I have.
Byron, who ended up serving on the committee? How many members of HRC did you have, and who?
I want to say it was eight of us, and we all partnered up together with Jim taking the lead and doing that. So all commissions didn't have the capacity, so I wanted to make sure that they didn't feel like they had to serve on the Grant Committee if they couldn't do so, but if they were interested and wanted to, that they felt welcome to.
Okay, so can we just get some information on follow-up on who did serve?
So you wanted the exact names? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, please.
That's not a problem. I can give that to you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones?
Just for what you were saying, I just want to clarify. So there are two charts that I'm looking at. One says Total Human Relations Commission, and then the other one has the, I'm assuming, the organizations that you're talking about, CASA and Healing Transitions, Interact, in a separate column. Did you guys help to make a recommendation on the proposed for that second list as well, or did you focus on that, the 50 nonprofits?
We focused on the 50 nonprofits. We didn't focus on those six organizations that we knew would receive other funding from the city.
So who sets how much money is in the proposed budget? If that wasn't you, who does that?
For those, for, you're talking about like CASA receiving $89,000. I'm not too sure. That was a question we had as well, as well as how did those organizations become grandfathered in?
Right.
Is that a process where other organizations could apply to possibly grandfather in the same way? I wasn't too sure. I think that's a staff question, so thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
So these are historically funded levels. So the funding levels themselves have not actually changed in multiple years. I mean, we're talking, going back to like fiscal year seven for some of these, fiscal year eight. So they are just at a certain level that has been provided historically.
So can that list grow, or are these the only groups that get this level of funding every single year?
That is up to council and whether or not any changes there would be made.
So if I'm understanding correct, council is the one who sets this list on the bottom with CASA, Healing Transitions, Interact, all of that?
They approved those, yes, so that information came before the, before council years ago and was approved at that time and has historically remained.
And do they have to apply every year, or is this just money that is given to them?
So they do have to submit an application, and while there were a couple, as Byron mentioned, that didn't make the actual application process, they have submitted, all of them have submitted applications at this time.
Oh, can you help me understand that? You said that they didn't, but now they have?
So there were two that didn't actually go through the HRC process, but did, but I reached out and they have submitted applications.
Okay, and, okay, so just if we wanted other organizations to get that, that would be a council decision and a council direction to put them under that list that has recurring funding every year?
That's correct.
So I think the city manager wants to...
To kind of help, and Tancy Hayward and I had a conversation right before this meeting. This year, we're going to go through an overhaul of our entire process. Some of the funding agencies, and I raised this point last year, there are some legacy organizations that continue to get funding. They're doing great work, but there are new organizations that are doing great work as well. And the way the process is, it doesn't always reward the new folks to be able to get into that funding cycle. So typically, how it happens is staff will bring from the various grant pots. It used to be, we had organizations getting funding out of three buckets. We changed that a few years ago to you can only get funding out of two. So that's why you will see some of the groups that are well-known didn't get any funding in some categories, but if you go back, they got funding in others. So it's a little confusing. And so what we're going to do is revamp the entire process. What council does is take the recommendations from staff and sort of kind of set aside and establish what that dollar amount is going to be. Then staff goes back and do the work. But I can understand, based on this, particularly for the ones that are new and seeing how the recommendations roll forward, it is somewhat confusing. And if you all will give us through the end of this budget cycle, we will bring forward a revamped process for next year. One that is, number one, more inclusive, one that is more forward-facing and gives us the ability to be able to grab folks that wouldn't normally be competitive in this process, which is what I asked for last year through the technical assistance money. And we're in that cohort right now, working through those groups so that they will get funding in this process next year, just to kind of level the playing field and so that we're not funding some agencies a whole lot and some not at all.
And just to follow up on that, it's, I guess, what I heard from the Arts Commission before, where they were trying to get new organizations in, just looking at this, it seems like, I just wanted to clarify if those are the same organizations. And just for example, like Interact is getting money from there. They're getting, or proposed, $70,000, but then also from the Human Relations Commission. They're also under Interact for $4,500. So it's kind of like both. And I'm just trying to make sure I understand what all of that is. So thank you. I appreciate it.
Mayor Portman?
As part of the revamp, I know, at least with the Art Commission, what they do is they have committee members that are on the Grants Committee, but they also bring in outside experts in certain areas to also be part of the Grants Committee. So, and they only come in during the Grants time and participate. Can we look at that model? Because I think that model may be helpful overall for all of our organizations that, you know, so I know we appoint people and they do their committees, but also if, they may have certain skills that they may want, that can bring in and help review some of these, because it's a lot of information. And asking, you know, people who may not have expertise in a certain service area, you know, it can be challenging.
Yes, we can absolutely do that as part of that review process. I would agree 100% with that. I think that really enhanced the arts department's analysis of the grants process and definitely saw some major improvements. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Jones?
I just wanted to go back to Byron. Just see, through this process, were there any other things that you noticed that you wanted to bring to the table or bring to the forefront about the whole process in general, not just that some organizations were grandfathered in?
I think the only thing I would like to add is that the last column that shows percentage of change, it looks kind of confusing or weird. And that's really because what we tried to do this year was try to, we tried to, with the priority areas that we're focused on in our work plan, we wanted to make sure there was alignment with the money in the organizations that was doing the work that submitted applications. So that's why some of it may, you may see where an organization may have received a lot of money last year and not so much this year. That's one thing. As well as, we also looked at different organizations' budget size and their operation, just in regards to just being mindful of what can happen or what happens if you have a smaller organization and you give them a lot of money with no direction and how that can possibly be challenging. So just kind of taking that into place, too, as well as figuring out on our end, if there's any follow-up we can do with these organizations in the year. So we give you this money, and it aligns with, you know, what we do as HRC, but how can we assist you in possibly your efforts in the community or what you do with these funds? So if there's any community engagement or any events that you all, that they may host, can we participate? Can we help promote that so that, you know, we're not just giving the money and then see you next year? So that'd be all I would like to add at this time.
Thank you so much for all the work that you've done. I appreciate it.
I appreciate you.
Councilmember Patton?
Yeah, I have a question. It's across the three, so you can offer your feedback, and then Arts Commission and CGT, DUB can also offer their feedback. I am curious, when I hear like some organizations submitted, but not with all the information, and then were not reachable again, or I hear that, like, there are not, there are just not that many new organizations, I'm curious procedurally, like, what might be the barriers? If, I'm curious if you have any thoughts on that, like, what holds back new organizations from applying? What are, what's difficult about the application process that might be standing in their way?
I recently became Chair of HRC, and I was excited for grants because I've done some, a few different like grant allocation in my professional role, so I wanted to see what it looked like here. And what I noticed was the amount of information that is required in the application can, you know, can kind of be a little discouraging, intimidating, as well as on our end, reviewing applications, I received one application that was 230 pages. That's a lot to go through. And I think it's a thing of these organizations want to be thorough. They want to make sure they get the information so they have a better chance of getting the funds so they can do the work they're doing. But there has to be some kind of way to meet in the middle so that we're getting all the information you need on your end, and then they're able to submit an application that we can actually read within an hour or so, and pull out what we need from it, you know, to really make sure that, you know, we don't have to spend, you know, too much time on the grant review process. We want to be thorough, but a 230-page application is a little excessive. And I received maybe about three of those just from my, my group of applications that I reviewed, which was about six. We had one that was 230 pages and another one that was about 150. So if there's something in regards to the questions you all asked and the requirements, possibly there could be some work there so that these answers may not have to be as long, or there might not be, have to be as many attachments. I understand that the application, grant application coming from the city is going to look a lot different than, I work in a nonprofit world, so we're able to do things a little differently in order to re-grant money and, you know, do things like that. But if there's something that can be done there in the wording in the application process, I think you all will see that we might better turn it around quicker on our end, as well as you might have more applicants apply for some of these grants as well.
Yeah, I think at the beginning, well, about six months ago, I had mentioned at the table after meeting with several nonprofits, they knew nothing about the grant process. And I think we need to do a better job at outreach from a communications standpoint and make sure that everybody's aware. And that's not an HRC function, that's a communications function. And I believe the city manager said that would be part of, part of the new process, just being much more proactive instead of just waiting for the applications to come in. Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, so like we did last year, where we had a number of smaller organizations that needed some technical assistance. For some of the ones that Byron has mentioned in this year, will we have another opportunity to provide technical assistance to those smaller groups that
Yes.
may not have had all the information and stuff?
Yes. We are working through that cohort right now to kind of get them ready. And you all will remember, our bucket was a million dollars. And so from that, once they get through the process, they're eligible for some of that money, and then they'll be eligible for the citywide process. And our goal is to continue to do that so that we can bring new organizations into the process.
Michelle, could you explain that a little more, in a little more detail, so the new councilmembers understand what we're talking about? They weren't here when this was formed.
So as you see all of this, this has been our process predates me, right? And so we trimmed it down to get it to this so that it's more manageable, so that it's not just a staff presentation up here to council, and we're asking council to endorse it because staff kind of brought it forward. So we did some tweaking probably about four or five years ago to the process, because through the Grants Committee, we saw where some agencies, because they were doing really good work, were being funded through Housing and Neighborhood, through HRC, through outside agencies, then other outside agencies, then some of our legacy organizations that automatically through the grandfathering gets money. And for some, it was really fruitful. And for others who were doing really good work, trying to get in the process, it was really hard for them to be competitive with the rubric that we had. So I asked council, when we had the ARPA funding, could we get a bucket of money to do some technical assistance? Because what we saw were the small agencies were not in a, in a, in a way or in a process to where they could be competitive. They didn't have audited financials. They didn't have professional folks on staff who could do the reporting and who could fill out the application in a way that it would be competitive and that it would score well enough to be funded. And so we started that process last year. There was some technical assistance. They had to attend some workshops to get ready, and then there was a bucket of money at the end, we called it at the end of the rainbow, for them to be able to go out and do some of that work through ARPA. This year, those people that successfully made it through that process, for the upcoming grant cycle, should be eligible to compete in the citywide process, understanding that we're going to have to make some tweaks overall to that system. And quite frankly, some of these other groups that you see that have been in the system for many years that maybe received nothing this year through one of these three buckets, they receive through the community initiatives, the community health initiatives through ARPA funding. So like, for example, Boys and Girls Club, we funded them through multiple ARPA processes. And so trying to make sure that we share the love and trying to make sure that we were responsive to the various needs in the community, not just the ones that we were the most familiar with, is sort of kind of where we're landing. And so now what we have to do is kind of create a process or a vehicle by which it opens up the lane so that there is a level of competitiveness, maybe from a small, medium, and large project, so that these agencies can get some of the funding. And we're not funding the same people every single year, although they're doing good work. And many on council will recall a few years back, some agencies were totally reliant on us for their funding. Like, we had four or five groups that 95, 98% of their overall annual budget was city money. So when we changed the process to set up different buckets, we also changed the process to tier that back to where it cannot be over 25% of an agency's overall budget. And we did it gradually. We stepped it down so that it wouldn't be, you know, a complete shock to an organization. And so I think we're in that process now where we've kind of stepped all of them down, and they're more independent. And they have been able to diversify their funding sources. And so hopefully, that's what will be the end result of the process that we initiated last year through technical assistance. And as we go through, which will be headed up by Tancy Hayward, as we go through this next process to create a more inclusive process, I think we will open the doors up for more organizations to be eligible to participate.
Councilmember Jones?
In relation to what Byron was saying about a 230-page application, who sets the the requirements for those applications?
So basically, the generic information that has to be supplied is the information that number one, we're monitored on all of that federal money. So in order for us to stay in good standing with HUD or FEMA or whomever we get our federal dollars from, we've got to comply with that. So we then issue that burden on the agencies that we fund. Now, 150 pages, we don't require that. I think those that do so much like that really want to put their best foot forward to kind of show what they're doing. A lot of it's visuals, metrics, and that is a good indication of the work that they're doing so that we can see that they're actually doing the work, but we don't require 150 pages, 230 pages, because he's right. It is very hard for staff because this isn't the only thing that they do when they work with the review committees to be able to provide funding recommendations to you guys.
So that, that's a staff, staff is, is in charge of setting the requirements to match with HUD and they don't require 230 pages, but people submit that?
Yes, there are certain things that we have to meet before we lose our standing to receive the federal dollars. So we obviously require the agencies that we fund to meet those obligations as well. But as part of the process, as we go through the evaluation, if there's any fluff or anything in there that might not necessarily get to a more productive process, then we probably will tweak that as we're going through because it is a heavy lift and it is, you know, we have volunteers that do this and for them to give their time to review hundreds of applications is a lot and, you know, trying to be understanding of that.
And just one more question.
The HRC, just for clarification too, that's not the federal
No, that one's not.
That's not federal. So the federal is the
Community enhancement grants on the Housing and Neighborhood side.
So we have say on this part of it, on the HRC. So if we could, let's look at the application process, just to make sure that it's user-friendly?
Yes. And so what we also saw last year too, is there are a lot of groups that are working and doing the work, but they don't technically have their 501(c)(3) or (c)(6) status yet. And so part of that process was to help them get ready and that requires typically an attorney, which costs money, and that sort of kind of shut a lot of people out of the process. So we were just trying to do everything that we could to get people ready to become competitive in the grant process so that we wouldn't leave anybody behind. Because quite frankly, during COVID, there were a lot of groups that we saw on a regular basis that were doing amazing work, but they would never be competitive in this process with some of these that have been doing the work for years and years.
And just one last question, of the group of CASA, Healing, all that, that's grandfathered in, is there a legacy, is there a time limit? Like how many times they can receive funding or is that just until whenever? Do they have like a stopping point?
I think Kirsten, you probably can come up and best address that. That kind of predates Tancy and myself. And so basically, I think council can allocate as much money or appropriate as much money as you all see fit. And then it would be up to staff and the various review committees to establish like how much in what bucket to meet what need. And as a result of that, can you speak a little bit Kirsten as to how these groups got in this category and why?
So how I think was at the council table, I know with, through budget notes or other means during the budget process. And then, and again, I look back at, at some of these, we are talking multiple years, fiscal year seven, fiscal year nine, for a few of them, fiscal year 13, fiscal year 14. So they just have historically been part of this legacy group. And so there is no timeline and council does have authority to make changes.
Can we get more information of managers update?
Yes, we'll go back and do a broad overview, give us a few weeks, within a month before we bring your proposed budget. So you guys can take a look at the process that we currently have and what some of our just right off the top of our head improvements for next year.
That would actually be a good work session too, before we start, like maybe the first budget meeting? What changes have been made?
Okay.
How we're doing it? So we get an update.
Thank you.
Thank you, Byron.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor, Members of Council and City Manager. I'm Susan Steed, interim HR Director. Thank you for the opportunity to come back to you today and talk about compensation. I'd like to introduce one of my partners in compensation, which is Ershad Patel. He is our compensation manager and he's here to help address questions as they come up. So today is just a quick overview of where we have been and where we're going and where we are. So you have in front of you a handout, which is a glossary of compensation terms. I provided this in the February 20th work session, brought it back again today if you'd like to use it as a reference if needed. So on February 20th, we were here to present some proposals to you and analyses that we were going to be conducting in compensation. Three of those proposals that we presented on February 20th included a supplemental retirement contribution change, a merit increase for FY24, and the living wage calculation and adjustments for FY24. Those are not going to be addressed today. They were proposed on February 20th and they will be coming forward in the FY24 budget in May. We also presented a multi-year benefit strategy. We will not be addressing that today. I want to talk a little bit about the work that we did in March. In March, we went back and conducted several analyses on compensation. And then we also started working on our public safety approach, recognizing some unique challenges in compensation and other factors in, in public safety. And then today, we're here to give an update on recommendations and results from those analyses and then talk a little bit further about our public safety approach and our future work. So here's our agenda for today. We'll share results of the annual market analysis. This was an overall market analysis for general population as well as an, as an analysis for the Raleigh Convention Center and the Performing Arts Center. We also did do an analysis of executive compensation. However, that is ongoing, so we're not, we will bring that forward a little bit later. We also established two approaches for public safety. One is a public safety collaborative, which is a long-term approach, and I'll address that in a couple of minutes. And then we also initiated a short-term approach in addressing some leapfrogging issues, which I'll also address. And then finally, our agenda will include a recap of a proposal we had for a comprehensive compensation and classification analysis. So first, we'll talk about the annual market analysis. We compared annual market survey of general positions within the city as well as Raleigh Convention Center and the Performing Arts Center. In total, we benchmarked 110 job classifications throughout the city. The methodology that we used was to compare jobs that were similar, similar in salary, responsibilities, and placement within the organizations. We also used a midpoint of the salary range to determine where our jobs should be placed. And then we used a 10% differential, which I'll talk about in a minute, of midpoint as a comparison for us to use. And then we, finally, we considered geographical differences with impact on salary data. So here are our findings. We, we had six job classifications that were more than 20% below the market midpoint. This is the medium of the pay range midpoints reported by the agencies that we surveyed. And then we also had a 23 job classifications that were between 10 to 20% below the market midpoint, 53 jobs that were within 10% of the market midpoint, eight jobs that were above the market, and then we had eight job classifications that had insufficient data. Insufficient data is when we receive fewer than five results from any reporting agency and that just means that we need to include it in the next year's analysis so we can get more information. Our recommendations from these analyses, we focused on the two categories that were most significantly below the market midpoint. That included those that were more than 20% below and those were more, that were more than 10, or between 10 and 20% below. So for those that were more than 20% below, we had 10 job classifications in that category and we are recommending that we move the salary range up two levels to accommodate that. For those that were between 10 to 20%, we had 27 jobs that were below and we're recommending that we move those up one pay level. We had 189 positions in total, so job classification is the job title and then there can be more, there can be a number of positions that fall within that job classification. So the impact was 189 cost estimate to make those adjustments to the pay ranges would be $220,000 and we would make that effective in October of 2023, at the same time that we will be promoting, proposing that merits are effective. In addition to the benchmarking that we did, we also recognized a few gaps in job classifications in the city and these were either through discussions with the departments or through organization-wide needs that we discovered. There is no cost impact to add these job classifications to our list of classifications. And if there were adjustments, those would be made at the time a reclassification is requested through our normal reclassification process in the city. So I will move on to our public safety approach. We have two initiatives, a short and a long-term approach, and I'll talk about our long-term approach first. Our long-term approach is a public safety collaborative. This is a, this is a systematical and methodical approach to addressing workforce challenges and a way to focus on being intentional about our desire to build trust, transparency, and open communication with the public safety departments. This is an effort between the city manager's office, human resources, budget and management services, finance, and public safety, which includes fire, ECC, and police. We are also using a structured approach in establishing regular meetings. These meetings will incur on a regular basis. They will ensure diversity and inclusion among representation in these committees and they will also have a charter that will help guide the work that we do. We, our group will be instrumental in informing the work we do as part of the future compensation and classification study. And it is just one of the subcommittees of the Employee Experience Group for the city. We recognize that there are unique challenges in public safety that are ongoing and need to be addressed, but we also recognize that there are workforce challenges citywide. So we will be standing up other committees to, to address citywide issues. So I'll move into the second initiative of public safety. This is our short-term approach and we have already started on a collaborative work in public safety in a short-term initiative that addresses legacy leapfrogging issues. This was introduced in our February 20th work session. We have completed work sessions in March with the public safety workshops. These public, these workshops included again, HR, the city manager's office, budget and management services and finance, and of course, the public safety departments. It started off with a kickoff meeting in March with all three groups together. Then we separated into workshops for each department to look specifically at leapfrogging cases. We first develop a shared understanding of what leapfrogging means and then our outcome was to reach consensus of leapfrogging cases and bring those forward with recommendations to the city manager. We're excited about an additional outcome that we discovered. I mentioned earlier that we wanted to establish trust, transparency, and open communication and we think we have set the stage for this among the group, the workshop sessions that we've held. We've received very positive feedback from this approach and we think this will help us as we move forward with the long-term approach, which is the public safety collaborative.
Could you explain a little bit about leapfrogging?
Yes, I'm happy to. So the way we've defined it in the city is, is when a junior employee with less years of service and less years in position advances further in salary than someone who's in a senior position. And there is some criteria that we also look at. We look at whether the position that is, is the senior position has ever been demoted or maybe did not receive a merit increase. We look at some other factors to, to determine, to determine that criteria.
That was something that came up over and over again during our last budget considerations and part of it is just this way the system is set up, but
Yes.
also the chief was given authority to correct those types of situations. And I guess, we didn't get 100% there, did we? But
No, but really close and they have been working really well with HR. I've been really impressed with the work that they've done over the last several months to kind of bring this home and kind of staff the committee with people all up and down the ranks within police, fire, and emergency communications so that we look at it holistically and not just from one particular rank, which is the mistake that was made in the past.
Yeah, and I'll share the recommendations, the results of that and the recommendations that that may help clarify as well.
Councilmember Jones?
How many of the employees in each of the fire, emergency, and police were included in this committee?
Sure. If you'll give me a second to get to my notes, I can tell you. So we had, I'll give you a breakdown by department. So in emergency communications, we looked at 67 positions. In fire, we looked at 606 positions. And in police, we looked at 600 positions. So you can see in total, quite a few positions were reviewed. And we looked at each rank of position. So in fire, we looked up, we looked from firefighter through deputy fire marshal. And then in police, we looked at the rank of police officer all the way through a police captain.
Thank you so much. Now, when you say the committee included your department, budget, all that, and then some employees from those departments, how many employees from those departments?
So we included three from ECC, three from fire, and two from police.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, so the results that we have, these are the positions that were identified as true leapfrogging cases that we want to address. There were a total of 200 There were a total of 271 cases, and we looked at cases where employees had more years of service and more years in position and had been leapfrogged. We went back to 2017 to do a thorough review of why the leapfrogging had happened. We also looked at other, we had each person at the table, look at each one and identify any other factors that affected them, and we ended up with 271 cases. We're recommending a pay adjustment of approximately $500,000 to be effective in October of 2023. So we know that this does not address all of the leapfrogging cases that we might have in public safety that have occurred, but these were the ones that are identified as the most significant. We know that we'll be able to continue addressing leapfrogging issues through two different ways. One will be through the new public safety collaborative, which is our long-term approach, and also through the compensation study that we're recommending to start in FY24. So the workshops that we did in March did reveal other challenges in the workforce that are happening. Those will also move forward in the public safety collaborative, and if appropriate, in the compensation study. And finally, that moves us to the compensation study. We presented a proposal for the compensation study back in the February 20th work session, so this is just a recap of that study. In the compensation study, we will be looking at job classifications, how they're structured. We also will look at compensation and pay plan structures if there's adjustments that need to be made there. We'll be looking at career ladders to look at how we can provide growth opportunities for employees, and then we will also revisit the living wage calculation in that comp study to see if we're handling that appropriately. Cost estimate with a consulting firm will be an estimated cost of $300,000 spread over a two-year period, and we are timing it so that it affects this cycle of the council membership. So we plan to finish this in time for, for FY26 in implementation at that point. And I believe that is it. Are there any questions that I haven't addressed yet?
May I approach him?
Definitely. Thank you for the presentation. I had a question about the first part of the presentation where the pay levels adjustments were made for two pay, two levels in order to fall in line with the market. My question is, of the levels in which they left, obviously, they're still within our scope. Are they going to be reviewed and adjustments made as far as the scope of work and pay? Because I would hate for us to fix this, then someone's hired at one of those lower levels, and we're having to come back and make adjustments again. So how, what are we doing so going forward, we don't put someone in a position that's below where, where they should be based on our responsibilities?
Yes, so very good question. So that was part of our discussions in our workshops, and will be part of the public safety collaborative too. We are going to proactively look at positions that are being moved or being hired to make sure that we don't have those issues. So I think part of that open communication we've established is that the public safety departments will notify us of any, any upcoming promotions, any issues that they see could potentially put us back in that position so we can address those before they happen.
But aren't these outside of public safety?
What I was going to say, yes. So that's great to answer the part about where we've seen some compression and leapfrogging, which are the legacy issues that we've seen with our current compensation system. Moving forward with the new system, that will help tweak that so that as promotions become more frequent and staffing gets to the levels that both the chief of police, the chief of fire, as well as ECC would like, we have a little bit greater predictability in what that will look like, and so we can make the adjustments on the front end as opposed to being a little bit responsive the way we've been in the past. But the leapfrogging addresses everybody in the organization. Leapfrogging happens not just in public safety. And so part of a market system is what we are now part of. We do an annual market review to look at this region and the national market, to price our jobs, to make sure that they are competitive in the market. And dependent upon movement and fluctuations in the market, we will then respond to what that movement looks like so that we stay competitive. We've seen some issues in the last few years in engineers, in IT, just because of the national market and the private sector draw on those employees. So in order for us to be able to maintain a level of competitiveness with our staff and get the best and brightest, we've got to kind of reach that level of pay, or else they're going to go to the private sector. So as we do that market review every year, we do about 80, 90 positions all across the organization. So we're looking at public safety, our general step employees, our broadband employees, and we, we kind of cycle it through to stay on top of it.
Okay, so basically sometime in the fall too, we're going to get some job reclassifications on our consent agenda.
Perhaps, maybe, yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Is there a collaborative for those outside of public safety as well?
Yes, so we are, we are in the process of standing up some collaboratives, so we're starting with the public safety collaborative, but we will establish one within the next few months for any departments that are outside of public safety. Because again, we recognize there are challenges in, in all of our departments.
And then can you help me understand the, the cost of the study that will take two years is going to be $300,000, and I understand that that's over a few years, but you know, us fixing these is 220,000, or 220,000 of those, but that seems like a lot of money. Can you help me understand what is done in the study that you guys are not doing currently?
Sure. So the, what we're doing currently to fix the leapfrogging issues is really just taking care of current issues and the most significant ones. And then the compensation study will address really our future work and, and looking at trends out in the market. We, one of the things that we will do is look at struc, pay structures, so the pay plans that we have. Do we have the appropriate pay plans in place to work, to work toward the future and sustainability of, of our salaries and, and our employees? So it's really looking more comprehensively at our pay structures, how our job classifications are structured, and it's using an experienced consulting firm to help us do that.
Thank you.
Sure.
So the comp study, I'm sorry. The compensation study will give us a systematic approach of how to move into the next several years after we get through implementation. Because to her point, what we're currently doing now with the adjustments that we're making as part of the budget process is fixing the hearing now, and it's just kind of looking at those issues that have kind of bubbled up through the review and analysis that we've done since the last review of our system. And this compensation system will look at our job classifications, because I would argue that some of our classifications aren't necessarily appropriate anymore. They were appropriate back in 2016, but few things have changed since 2016, as well as our pay ranges, and, and, and really looking at the competitiveness of public safety pay and some of those other hard-to-hire positions. And what that will do then is give us a systematic approach of how we will look at reclasses, how we will look at addressing compression and leapfrogging when there is a promotion cycle. Because that's typically when we see it most likely on the public safety side, when someone gets promoted up, because today's money is different than yesterday's money. So once you get that promotion today, it's worth more than the promotion that you got yesterday. And so there's a potential for somebody to leapfrog over someone that was sitting in that same position eight, 12 months ago.
And how often do you think, as we move forward the next, you know, 10, 20 years, how often do you think we have to do these studies?
I would say to, to stay true to a market-based system, probably every five to seven years. Just, and, and obviously, we'll look at it annually for some of those positions like we currently do, but for a system approach, I would say every five to seven years. Because there's so many market influences that are outside of our control that we would have to consider in order to make sure that our pay kind of aligns with the local market as well as the regional market and the national market that we compete with. Some of our positions, we only compete locally, but then some of our executive and broadband positions, it's the national market that we have to compete with. So yeah, I would say five to seven years.
Thank you.
Councilmember Patton.
Hi, thanks for the presentation. Can you go back to that slide about the 189 positions? I could be re-asking, a question's already been asked, but I just want to make sure I fully understand. So these 189 positions mentioned on that slide are only in public safety? Or they are?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I found it. Yes, it is all in public. I'm sorry, this is, no, this is in the annual market analysis. So these are all, this was before we talked about public safety, but these are all the positions that we marketed or benchmarked.
Okay, awesome. That's helpful, that's what I thought, and I just want to clarify. Can you help us, help me understand more about the profile of the 189 jobs? Are there like particular departments that had more positions that fell outside of the range? Or like, were these more hourly positions, like associate-level positions, or more mid-range manager-type positions? Can you just help me understand the profile of these?
Sure, sure. They really are all over the board. We did have a number that fell into convention center and performing arts center, and I think mainly because they have some specialized positions like marketing and sales that we typically, you don't typically see in some cities. So they had asked for a special market analysis to look at that. But the other positions fell over the board. Now, the five positions, not positions, but classifications that were more than 20% below the market, those were both in, in performing arts and convention center, as well as health and safety specialists. These could be spread out among departments. We also had plan operations manager that could be in a couple of different departments, and then chief inspection compliance officer that could be in, in one or more departments. The ones that were between 10 to 20% below market, that was fairly well scattered among departments, some representing planning and development. We also had public safety, risk management, training and development across departments, communications and outreach across departments. So it really was spread over, over the departments.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
All right, good afternoon again. I'm Sadia Satar with Budget and Management Services. I'm here today to present the fiscal year '24 to '28 capital improvement plan for the city's enterprises. Budget is currently developing other components of the CIP, and a full CIP will be presented to city council during the May 16 proposed budget presentation. Capital improvements refer to major non-recurring physical expenditures such as land, buildings, public infrastructure, and equipment. The CIP is a working document and is reviewed and updated annually to reflect changing community needs, funding opportunities, and priorities listed in the strategic plan, comprehensive plan, community survey, and long-term studies and master plan. The development of the CIP follows a similar trajectory to that of the operating budget. We've received and reviewed CIP requests early, at the earlier part of the year, to develop some long-term funding strategies and needs, and also to identify any future bond needs, especially for large infrastructure. At today's CIP work session, as I mentioned, we'll be discussing the CIP for our enterprises, and we propose, we will propose a complete CIP to city council as part of the fiscal year '24 proposed budget presentation next month. So as I mentioned earlier, we'll focus on select enterprises for the city of Raleigh to include Raleigh Transit, Raleigh Water, Stormwater, the Convention Center and Performing Arts Complex, as well as parking. Our goal today is to provide an overview of the projected totals for these enterprises and speak to key service areas funded in the fiscal year '24 capital budget. So I'll start with Raleigh Transit. As you can see, the proposed CIP budget for the fiscal year '24 to '28 totals about $132.2 million for Raleigh Transit. The CIP's budget for fiscal year '24 includes about $80 million in wake transit plan projects, and these include the Wake BRT Southern Corridor, the construction of an ADA facility, as well as bus shelter improvements. Raleigh Water's capital projects are fully funded by revenues received from rates and fees for services, and also from fees associated with new development. The utility CIP budget projected for fiscal year '24 to '28 totals $867.2 million. The fiscal year '24 CIP budget for Raleigh Water totals $189.3 million and provides capital funding for plant and pump station maintenance, interceptors and asset, asset management rehab. The fiscal year '24 CIP budget includes a 4% rate increase to the utility, which is dedicated to major CIP infrastructure projects as well. The CIP budget projected for the Convention Center and Performance Arts Complex in fiscal year '24 to '28 totals about $19.1 million, and the fiscal year '24 CIP budget totals $6.1 million and provides capital funding for maintenance and upkeep related to the Convention Center Performance Arts Complex and Walnut Creek maintenance. Last but not least, the Stormwater CIP project, sorry, the Stormwater CIP budget is projected to total almost $90 million for fiscal year '24 to '28. The '24 CIP budget for Stormwater totals $12 million and provides capital funding for the program's wide and diverse range of high-quality stormwater service areas to include water quality improvement, stream restoration and stabilization, neighborhood stormwater improvements, and lake preservation. The fiscal year '24 CIP budget also includes a 2.5% rate increase to the Stormwater Utility, which is dedicated to CIP, major CIP infrastructure projects as well. I know I breezed through this because I realized that we're past five, and we've got two other presenters after myself, but I just wanted to say that staff is continuing to finalize our CIP, and as I mentioned, we'll bring a complete CIP to city council on May 16 when we bring the proposed budget for the next fiscal year. So I know I was super, super quick in this presentation, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Councilmember Harrison.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. So will transportation come up beyond transit?
Yes, so like I mentioned, we are just focusing on some select enterprises today. We are still in the process of working with the departments, as well as the Department of Finance, to really finesse the CIP for the, you know, fiscal year '24 to '28. So that's why you have not seen, you know, general public improvements and transportation and the tech fund. So all of those are to come.
Okay. I just wanted to note for transportation, I think I receive more interest around transportation probably than any other topic, and we have an amazing transportation department, and I would love to see more opportunities for them to do great work. I just got an email about, you know, wanting more paint on the roads, you know, some simple things, but they cost money, so I just want to throw that out as something I'm looking for. And then I was curious, I saw that CIP budget item for the Performance Arts Center, so that's not related to our like tourism dollars, right? So that's coming from our own pocket.
So Marshall, I don't know if you wanted to take this one?
No, the, these are our dollars, not any money that comes from CVB. This is our general upkeep and maintenance on our facilities.
Okay. Okay. And then Stormwater was 12 million for fiscal year 2024, and then going back to the Performance Arts Centers, it was more like 19 million-ish? Is that, oh, no, no, I'm sorry. Okay, just 6.1, okay.
6.1, yes.
All right, yeah, I'm just trying to think about some of the concerns that I hear. I also hear a lot about Stormwater. I know that we're backlogged on a number of projects there, so also looking for wonderful increases in that space. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, any other questions? All right, all right, well, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Mayor Protim and City Council, Nick Sadler, Budget and Management Services, and I'm here today to talk to you about the FY24 proposed fee And I'm here today to talk to you about the FY '24 proposed fee schedule. That fee schedule is in your agenda packet as a PDF in the proposed form for your reference, and I've got it here too if we need to refer to it. So every year, we bring a comprehensive list of fees that the city charges to the city council for your review, and then ultimately your approval in June. We believe this creates a higher level of transparency. We're going to list all the fees that we charge, for the most part, all the fees. It also establishes a single source for fee information. So a few years ago, actually about five years ago, we used to have a lot of disjointed fee schedules out there. This effort brought all of those together into one fee document that the council, again, adopts at a yearly or annual basis. And it also provides an opportunity in April for us to present the fees to you, to talk about new fees, major changes that we may have, that again, that you'll adopt in the annual, annual budget ordinance. So a few indices that we use for the fee schedule, so some of our fees are adjusted based on market, some of our fees are adjusted based on these indices, and we have two indices that we use. The first is the Engineering News Report, and this year, that is set at 7.19%. If you think about this, this is for construction goods. So what we do is we use the Engineering News Report, which is a publication that comes out, we get that information, and then apply those, that index to those fees that are indexed using the ENR. The second one is a Consumer Price Index, which you're probably more familiar with, comes from the federal government, and that's an average of a basket of goods over a 12-month period, so eggs, milk, things like that, and looks at what the inflation rate is over a 12-month period. The CPI for this year is at 7%. Just like last year, we've, are proposing to council not to bring that to the full 7%. We are proposing a modified CPI of 6%, which is what is shown in the fee schedule that you have in front of you. And that's just to not have these spikes that we've seen because of inflation over the last couple of years, and to keep those price, which we know we're going to increase every year because we always have inflation, but to keep it from spiking and to be a little bit more level in that, in that march forward. So you've already seen a lot of the major fees that have been presented back in March, Solidway Services, Stormwater, Raleigh Water, and then Planning and Development Services came to you. We are working under the assumption that you saw those and that we are moving forward with those in the FY '24 proposed budget, and if you have any questions about those, we have staff here that are able to answer that. But our assumption is that we are comfortable moving forward with that, and that's what you'll see on March 16 when the manager proposes her budget. We do have one new fee that we want to mention here with the Raleigh Fire Department, so a new fee for external training for participants, so if we have other firefighters or staff come from other units of government or otherwise that are coming in and doing training, this allows the fire department to charge for that, so the charge for those services and the cost providing those services. And also a special event fee for non-city events, so non-city sponsored events. Those events that are non-city sponsored will now be charged a fee if they require fire staffing at those, at those events. A somewhat major change for our Raleigh Convention Center, Red Hat Amphitheater, and Martin Marietta Center for Performing Arts, you'll notice in your fee schedule at the end, there are quite a few fees that we're asking to be eliminated. Now, these fees are not going to be eliminated, they are still going to be charged, but simply eliminated from the annual fee schedule that you, you adopt and go to a more administrative approval for the center director. And these really are around production, administrative types of things, audiovisual, IT, and it just allows RCC some administration and flexibility when they're booking various events. It also allows for new equipment needs. So as you know, information technology and technology is constantly changing and adapting, and as the center gets these new, these new technologies, doesn't mean they have to, this just means they don't have to come back and get those fees added as it currently is. This will require a code change from council that the city attorney's office and RCC is currently working on, and they'll bring that back to you in May before their proposed budget for that, that code change. So again, all these fees are going to be included in the May 16 proposed operating budget, and we'll ask council to adopt these fees for the FY '24 operating budget when you, when you get that ordinance packet in June. Happy to take any questions you might have.
Mayor Protim.
Thank you for the presentation. I have two questions that I know are actually probably in conflict of each other. The first question, I know, but the first question is, do our fees help cover our true costs?
I think it depends on the fee. I think, you know, Planning Development Services, for example, came to you a couple of, I guess, back in March, and those, those fees, for the most part, are not covering the true costs. Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources is undergoing a fee study right now and is operating under the old fee study, where some of those, depending on the program, is subsidized at a higher rate depending on the benefit to the community. So I think it just depends on the, on the fee and the benefits to the community and council's policies that were previously set.
Okay. So here's now my conflict. Where we have situations where we're looking like affordability as far as housing, or if we're looking at a nonprofit using our center, do we have a fee structure to help them still move forward with their proposal or their project, or even to build their housing? Do our fees kind of, do our fees not prevent them from moving forward?
So in terms of Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources, I think I understand what you're saying. There are fees in place, and Stephen, if I'm butchering this, please let me know, there are fees in place that give a discount for nonprofits, community groups. I believe that an item just came out in the manager's report this past Friday in relation to fees for development, and I would, I would ask that someone from Planning Development Services may come up, but not sure if that answered your question. I think in those two areas that you mentioned specifically, parks, planning, well, parks particularly, there are fees in place that help those nonprofits and community groups get to the spot that they need or find the places that they need to use the spaces.
Okay, that's helpful. The main thing is, I wanted to ask those two questions so people understand the conflict that we have when it comes to budgeting.
Hmm.
You know, we're trying to make sure that we receive, that we cover our costs, at the same time, allow space and opportunity for those that are challenged in even meeting those costs. So just want to kind of put that out there and just thank you for what you're doing.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions? All right. Yes.
I do.
Councilmember Patton.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I had a couple quick questions. The new fee for fire, the external training fee, is this a service that fire is already providing for free at this time? It is.
It is a, yeah, to my friends in the fire department, I believe this is a fee, excuse me, this is a service that is already provided, and they're just establishing or asking you all to establish a fee so they can recover some of the costs associated with that.
Got it, excellent. And then just, could you touch again on the set of changes here for the Performing Arts and Convention Center? I guess they're being compressed into just sort of one fee that, so like if they need an extra speaker, it's not an individual?
Yeah, so if you, if you look in the fee schedule that is provided in your backup material, there's, there's quite a few discontinued fees there. And what, what the code change will bring is, is moving those fees to administrative setting so that the director has authority, like, like a lot of our other directors do in fee setting to some degree, to allow them to set based on real market conditions, and those market conditions change so frequently. They also, in terms of like IT, like I said earlier, equipment, new equipment, that maybe, maybe would enhance the services that are provided to customers who come in and rent the space. You all still will have the authority for the rental spaces, so the ballroom, right, the boardroom, all of the theaters, those major types of spaces and fees you would still have. This just moves a lot of those fees that are administrative in nature to the director for their, their setting for each year annually. That helps, yep.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick.
Yep.
Good evening, Mayor, and Mayor Protim and Council, Matt Courier, I'm the parking manager for the city within transportation. So we'll be walking through our parking citation fee schedule changes. So first, we'll walk through the current methodology, then we'll walk through the new proposed methodology. We'll do benchmarking with local and regional and nationwide cities. We'll chat through a Glenwood South nighttime option, and then finally, we'll talk about some additional efforts that we have to support safe parking. So our current citation fee methodology is really broken into two slightly similar buckets. The first one is our regulatory citations. So think of these as citations for folks who've parked safely and in the right location, but they've just parked for a little too long. So these are, you know, exceeding expired meters or overtime parking or exceeding those time limits, and those are currently set at $20. And then we have this big bucket of kind of various safety and regulatory citations that are all $30. So that's parking in, you know, maybe the wrong type of loading zone, or blocking a fire hydrant, or blocking a bike lane, or a bus lane, or parking right in the middle of a crosswalk. They're all priced the same. And then finally, we have these other citations, like our ADA space violations that are set at $100. It's important to note that 90% of that goes to Wake County schools. We have our residential permit zones citations, those are set at 30. And finally, our electric vehicle spaces, which are set at 50. So our proposed citation fee methodology looks to categorize parking citations into buckets based on their impact. So violations with lower community impact would be lower, so think of those as our expired meters. And then violations with greater community impact would be higher. That's like blocking crosswalks, blocking fire hydrants, those types of unsafe behavior. The goal here is to focus enforcement and behavior change on safety and quality of life violations, to lower the financial burden of kind of these low-impact violations, and finally, use paint and other materials to encourage safe curb space use. So the new methodology has four main categories. So this includes regulatory one, which are that same kind of regulatory bucket where people have parked safely, they've just maybe stayed for too long. The base would stay at $20, but we would give folks a kind of a $5 discount if they pay within five days. So we're going to make those less expensive for folks. We have our regulatory two, which are $30, and they're currently $30. This is, this includes folks who park in maybe the wrong loading zone or they're kind of non-curb space usage, so think about folks who maybe park in a commercial loading zone on accident and shouldn't be in a commercial loading zone, and they maybe block a delivery that has some community impact, that has impact to our businesses, or maybe they block a curbside pickup zone, now folks can't use those. The next are our safety one violations. These are proposed to go from $30 to $35. This is parking in really those general no parking areas, or maybe parked poorly. So think about folks who really park in any of our general no parking areas, those kind of typical corner clearances and so forth, as well as just parking in a way that's unsafe. So think about folks who maybe haven't parallel parked very well, and now the back of their car is kind of sticking into the travel lane, that would fall into this bucket. And then our last are our safety two, which are our really most unsafe behavior, that's folks who park, you know, blocking crosswalks, parking on sidewalks, blocking fire hydrants and bike lanes, those types of very dangerous parking behavior that really have a great impact on the safety of our citizens. There's a final little bucket of other stuff that doesn't fit neatly there. We have our ADA space violations. We're proposing going from 100 to 200. General statutes allow us to go up to $250. Again, 90% of this revenue, go, excuse me, goes to Wake County schools. We would take our residential permit zone violations from $30 to $40. Our electric vehicle spaces would stay the same at $50. And finally, we'd have a new type of violation, specifically for commercial vehicle safety violations. This would take it from $30 all the way to $50, really recognizing that when our, you know, commercial vehicles park in a way that's unsafe, it is even a greater impact to the safety of citizens, seeing around those large vehicles, when those types of vehicles block crosswalks, it's dramatically more impactful than even a passenger vehicle doing so. So a quick recap of kind of where those current and where those proposals are, so regulatory one, again, kind of those expired meters, stay the same with the base fee of $20, but folks will have an option to pay less if they pay within five days. Regulatory two, generally kind of loading zone violations, are going to stay the same at $30. Safety one, which is those kind of general no parking, or maybe parked poorly or unsafe, is going to go from 30 to 35. Safety two, which is crosswalks and bike lanes and fire hydrants from 30 to 40, residential permit zones from 30 to 40, ADA spaces from 100 to 200, commercial vehicle safety 30 to 50, and electric vehicle spaces staying the same at 50. So when we do benchmarking, we look at a group of local municipalities, regional municipalities, and national municipalities to kind of see where we land. So the first one we have here are those regulatory one citations, so think expired meters. We have it shown here at 15. You'll see that's the same as Chapel Hill and Greensboro. That next level up is that $20 fee, which is what kind of base for this would be, so somebody who pays on the seventh or eighth day would pay $20. That's the same as Wilmington and St. Louis. Then it goes up from there, Charlotte's at 25, Durham, Austin, Dallas are all at 30, and then on the high side, we have Cincinnati at 45. Regulatory two, loading zones, you'll see on the low end, we have Wilmington at $20. We're a little bit higher at 30, but the same as New Orleans, Dallas, Durham, and St. Louis. Greensboro's a little higher at 35, Austin at 40, then it goes up from there, Chapel Hill is 50, and Miami on the high end at 75. Safety one, again, these are like those no parking or maybe parked poorly. We've got Wilmington on the low end at 20, us at 35, the same as Greensboro, Austin and Dallas, and Richmond and New Orleans are all at 40. Then it goes up, Chapel Hill is again at 50, and Cincinnati's at 65. The last is our safety two, in this specific benchmark, we use crosswalks. On the low end, we have Wilmington at 20. We're with a pretty large group, all at 40, with Austin, Dallas, New Orleans, and Richmond. It goes up from there, Chapel Hill is 50, and then on the very high end is Charlotte, who happens to charge $100 for this violation. So that's it for benchmarking, I won't bore you with any more charts. This one is a option for council to consider around Glenwood South at night. So what we did was draw some rectangles around Glenwood South, as well as our neighborhoods adjacent to them. We would have, in effect, a boundary, and I'll highlight them here, from Hillsborough Street on the south, West Street to the east, P Street to the north, and St. Mary's to the west, which would be the kind of core area that we would call Glenwood South. And then including in that is there's a residential permit zone highlighted to the north, and a different one highlighted to the west. So what this option would say is that on all days from 9:00 PM to 7:00 AM, safety one and two violations and residential permit zone violations would shift up to $50. And that's to reflect the impact that Glenwood South has from a, one, a pedestrian perspective. So along this corridor, we have a lot of vehicles, we have a lot of vehicles searching for parking, and a lot of pedestrians traversing, you know, after 9:00 PM through this corridor. So the impact of a vehicle blocking a crosswalk, for example, is heightened in this area. And again, staying on that theme of higher fines for greater impact, this would, this would be for that. And then also, the impacts of the residential permit zones to the north and west are greater in these areas, especially after 9:00 PM. So it's a, let me get, erase that. So for, and just a quick comparison, we've added now the Glenwood South option on the far right side. You'll see that there's no change to regulatory on that option. The only changes, again, are safety one, safety two, and residential per- The only changes, again, are safety one, safety two, and residential permit zones. Everything else stays the same. So the last is our efforts to encourage safe parking. So we really use a data-driven approach to apply additional horizontal and vertical markings in our most frequently cited unsafe parking areas, because generally, we don't want to write the citation, we just don't want folks to be there. That's the worst-case scenario, is when we haven't done a good job telling folks that you can't be in these areas, because it's unsafe to be in these areas. So we have a couple examples of the work that we've done. The first is a fire hydrant on Hillsborough Street, right in front of Target. It was a very frequently used fire hydrant and blocked fire hydrant. As you can imagine, a lot of folks would love to park there and run in real quick to Target, grab something and come out. We were writing that very often. We made this change, and in the last three years, we've written four citations. So we believe, generally, folks want to do the right thing. They want to park safely, just in sometimes, we don't signal to them where those areas they shouldn't be are. The second thing that we've done is install a lot of scooter parking, specifically around the Glenwood South area. What you'll notice is where we place those scooter parking spaces wasn't in traditional parking spaces, it was in the no parking areas. So we didn't sacrifice parking to implement those. What we did was block poor parking behavior by implementing those. So here's a great example, right in front of the Armadillo Grill. As you can imagine, a lot of DoorDash and Uber Eats drivers love to pick up and deliver from there. A great place was to park blocking that crosswalk on a, on a Friday or Saturday night. So when we thought about how to implement scooter parking, we really wanted to put it in places that would discourage some of the most unsafe behavior. Now, we are looking to expand that program, as well as expand additional horizontal and vertical markings in our areas where it is most dangerous for folks to park. All right, so that is, that is all I have. I'm happy to answer a lot of questions on that.
So I have one question, and then Counselor Fort, and then Counselor Harrison. $50 for Glenwood South?
Hmm.
That's too low.
Yeah.
That's my feedback.
Okay.
I, I mean, if we really want to discourage that kind of behavior, I'm thinking the penalty needs to be more severe.
Okay. So we, we did benchmark that, if you want to run into that real quick. I've got a quick slide that we, that we did benchmark, specifically residential permit fees. So we took that same group of cities. A couple of them did fall off, because we couldn't find their residential permit fees, maybe they didn't have them. You'll see that we, with the $40, we find, we've currently kind of fallen in the middle, the same as Austin and Wilmington. And then up to 50, where Chapel Hill is in Nashville, you'll see it goes up from, from there.
That's just my opinion.
Yeah.
Okay. Counselor Member Fort?
You talk, you took the thought out of my head, and I guess my question for Robin is, what's the maximum that we could charge for residential parking violations?
Well, our office is working with Matthew to determine that. I think if we use a civ, a civil penalty, kind of as opposed to a criminal penalty, that we have more flexibility. And I think Shaney Richardson has been working with you, and we're going to come up with what we think is, is probably the maximum that, that you can charge that we could justify.
Okay, because, not to steal Counselor Member Harrison's thunder, but I've been dealing with this for two and a half, three years. And to me, in the conversations I've had with other transportation folks, you've got to make it cost prohibitive for people to feel like they want to park in a residential area. And if the cost to park at night in Glenwood South is $50, $25, or whatever, a $50 parking ticket is not going to discourage people from going into the residential areas to park. And that, I think that's what we've been trying to communicate repeatedly, because that's what the residents in that area have been saying to us repeatedly. So we're looking to go in a direction where it's a high fine, your car can get towed, so that people are discouraged from parking over there. $50 is not going to discourage anybody from doing that. And we're going to stay in the same cycle where people are going to continue, the residents who live there are going to continue to complain to us and feel like we're not doing anything to address it. So I understand the benchmarking from other areas. I don't know if they've got a Glenwood South in Chapel Hill or something where they, they're dealing with the same issue.
Franklin Street.
Yeah, but still.
But it's different to your point.
It's not quite, it's not the same.
It's not the same.
Nope. Well, and the whole thing is to be able to come up with a number that's going to discourage the conduct.
Right.
And so, that can be a, kind of a sliding scale, and I think that's what we're, we're working on. If people are willing to pay the $50, then that's not discouraging the conduct, and that's the number that we're looking for.
Because parking in a deck, or finding parking on the street or whatever, you, you know, for most people, that's the regular cost that they would pay anyway, so they're not going to be discouraged. And so, we're trying to find the hammer.
Right.
Okay.
We understand.
Yeah, the carrot's been there too long.
Understood.
Yeah, just to add to the conversation, thank you both. We do have some monthly meetings set up right now with neighbors around the area who are, you know, this is one of the topics, for sure. We're going to be talking about tomorrow morning, actually, 8:30 AM, if anyone wants to join us. But I was curious, I do recall hearing about also the need for greater, you know, enforcement. So, you know, to me, you know, the number is one thing, but it's, are people afraid of anything happening?
Yeah.
And I'll just say, in my, like, personal view, this is a more permissive city in terms of you can get away with some stuff, because nobody's coming around enough. And so if you know you're going to get the $50 fine, then that's different than the, eh, it's a very small chance that anybody's coming around. So I'm just curious, how does that work into this as well?
Yeah, so, so about a year ago, we did create a dedicated nighttime crew. We had some staffing issues, whereas you can imagine, we did a lot of rotating previous, where we would take daytime crew and they'd work on days for a month, and then they would shift. We didn't like that. It was creating, you know, folks saying, I don't really want to work Fridays or Saturday nights, I'll take time. And we had low staffing on those most important nights. So we created a dedicated crew. We have had some recruitment challenges. I think we've, we have two that are incredible. We have a supervisor who is incredible. Filling those last two has been a challenge. We've gone up four times for that. Had great candidates, and then at the last minute, they decide not to, not to come on. So we're working very closely with the HR department to find some solutions to that, to try and make sure that we can get those staffed up. But I will say, I think we have done a lot in that neighborhood. I think we sent out numbers recently on how many citations we wrote. Year-to-date through, golly, I think it was year-to-date through February, we had written over 1,000 citations in just the neighborhood to the north, which is dramatically more than any other neighborhood throughout the city. So we have put a serious emphasis on that. Our staff only work till 1:00 or 1:30 AM, and then our partners at RPD take over. We went through some extensive training with them on how to access our residential permit program, how to utilize some of our tools that we have on the parking side that our folks at RPD don't always have access to, to make sure that they're aware of those tools, that they can get those tools. I, I think I would say, that hasn't stopped the behavior, though. They're still parked every Friday and Saturday night. We continue to go and, and write those citations. So I think, again, efforts to, to modify that would help.
Counselor Member Fort?
Yeah, but, and to your point, if you're writing 1,000 citations, people are not discouraged, but if you start towing cars and you're charging $500, I bet you won't write 1,000 citations.
Yeah.
Is there a recommended number? I mean, we, we obviously, we're looking at a sheet, we see 50, it's not enough. Do we want to say, see if 100 works and go from there?
Let's, let's let the city attorney's office continue their research, and then come back with a recommendation.
Oh, I understand, but I'm just saying, still, if, giving them something, right now, we're saying 50's not enough, but they're shooting in the dark. So my question is, do we have something?
Let them, let them come back with us after they do their legal research. I think they got the message. We want it high.
Okay.
I think Counselor Member Fort called it the hammer. So, Counselor Member Harrison?
Yeah, I was just also curious about the fees for, I think it's safety two. I was thinking in particular about parking in a bike lane. Do we have any data on how often that's happening or getting cited?
So very difficult to understand how often it happens. So we don't have sensors around bike lanes or anything like that to really monitor that behavior. It's a hard one to catch, if I'm honest. Same with a lot of the bad loading behavior, double parking. It's, it's difficult, if our staff aren't there, they, they don't see it. So we don't really have a lot of great data. We can certainly, I don't have in front of me, you know, I do have in front of me, how many, how many at least paid bike lane violations we had. It was 250 last year.
People that paid?
That were paid. I only, I only have in front of me just the paid, so.
How many unpaid?
I don't have in front of me, I'm sorry. But I can certainly follow up with kind of just a list of how many of those types of violations that we issue generally on, on an average year.
Yeah, that's also another one I would be open to moving up slightly. I'm curious on the getting people to pay front. What is the, I guess, the hammer? If you don't pay, what happens to you?
Yeah, so, so probably a few statistics for you. So, so folks who do pay tend to, on average, pay within 15 days. At 21 days, there is a $10 fee added. At then 180 days, there's a $20 fee added. And then what we have after 270, I think, my staff will check me if I'm wrong, we can send folks to what's called NC debt set off. So this is an NC debt set off eligible civil fine that we have. And what that allows us to do is kind of get in line, and then that money can be extracted by the state from folks lottery winnings or state income tax returns. So kind of after that 270-day, that's where that goes. But again, we can only get it from North Carolina residents. So folks, if they were from Florida, or Georgia, or South Carolina, our only way is secondary collections, and not through that NC debt set off program.
You know about what percentage end up in that debt program?
So we typically get about two-thirds of the citations paid in any given year. And about a third ends up going through some sort of collections program.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Member Patton?
Yes, I have several, not about Glenwood South. I go inside when the streetlights come on, like a, like a proper 80's kid. I was curious about if, while you were doing this benchmarking, if there, if you also did any benchmarking, or if there was data on the rate of occurrence of these violations? For instance, Cincinnati, who was so high on so many of these charts, do they have a lower rate of occurrence of these viol, of like, a lower rate of occurrence of these violations essentially? Like, is it effective?
Yeah, that's a, that's, that's a wonderful question. So a dataset that's not easily available, kind of in the industry, is that dataset? It's easy to get how, how much folks charge, because it tends to be a council-adopted or ordnanced figure. It's a much heavier lift to go city by city and ask. Also, not every city has the same types of violations or calls them the same thing. So it's just a harder set to get to. We are part of a lot of wonderful collaboratives with, with peer cities. I can tell you, generally, no one has solved parking violations. There's, there's nobody who has all of a sudden done something magical, and they don't have a parking problem in their city. There isn't necessarily, I think, a rate at which stops the behavior. There's certainly rates at which, you know, discourage the behavior. So I think that's probably, from a policy perspective, where we're trying to land.
Awesome. And then, another, separate, unrelated question. The 90% of funds that come from the ADA violations that we send to Wake County schools, do you have a number on how much revenue that is?
So we typically, in any given year, are right around $30-ish thousand worth of citations. So we would keep around $3,000 and send 27 on. And that's a broad figure across the last several years, obviously, that goes up and down.
And do you know off the top of your head if that goes to a particular earmarked fund of theirs, or if it goes to?
I am not sure exactly what they do with it.
That's right. Okay, two more. Stay with me, they're not related to either of those previous questions. The food types, gig, types of gig work where people might use their personal vehicles in a commercial way, like DoorDash or Uber, will those be treated in these, with these commercial vehicle violations, or with the regular?
No. So, so we would treat those differently. So, so what we're making distinction is commercial-sized vehicles, think box trucks and 18-wheelers, you know, the UPS's and FedEx's and those types of folks. The gig economy folks, for us, don't have that same level of impact, from a visual perspective, that, you know, we're trying to dissuade with that. I will also say that we are converting, and have converted, a lot of our loading zones from commercial-only to what we call mixed-use, which allow pretty much any type of behavior except for parking. And it's very specifically centered around those gig economy workers, making sure they have a space, because they're not permitted to park in commercial zones.
Awesome, helpful. And then my last one, I wanted to talk more and understand a little bit more about this $15 if paid within five days. I just wanted to understand the thinking there, because, not dissimilar to some of the conversation I've heard from my colleagues, like, that is less than a, or similar to a day rate in a deck.
Yeah, it's, it's actually $1 more than our daily rate in all of our municipal parking decks, except for Convention Center and Performing Arts Center. The whole idea here is to, just again, lower that impact on folks who, you know, just maybe stay a little bit longer than they should. It's, it's our most commonly-written citation. It's the, it's the one where we, you know, we have a really robust appeals process. It's the one that we often hear of, I'm from Jacksonville, North Carolina, I have never paid a meter in my life, I didn't even know what to do. And, you know, for us, we want to reduce that burden, because at the broad scheme of things, again, talking about impact and pricing based on impact, staying a little bit too long is, is really the least impactful thing we have. To your point, the risk is, you know, do we encourage folks now to park on the street rather than park in the parking decks? We have some tools for that, and so when my folks write citations, they are able to see offender history, so they know how many times that license plate has made that choice. And, you know, on a case-by-case basis, we would choose how to take care of those. You know, from a expired meter perspective, if it's a two-hour zone, we could write that folks, that person, every two hours. Now, it's something we don't like to do, but we do have some folks who are common offenders of parking on the street all day, and to that point, are okay to pay $15 or $20, or whatever it costs them. So in order to encourage them to stop that behavior, we have that tool available to us, and we would use it, obviously sparingly, and really in those severe situations.
And is the five days based on, is that incenting a certain time limit? Do you commonly have people pay at the sixth day, and getting them in that fifth day prevents any administrative gain?
Not necessarily. When we looked across, you know, average time to pay, it was 15 days. And we said, okay, hey, let's give folks basically a week. And if they pay it within that first week, then we'll give them a discount. And then basically, they have that second week now if they, to still pay, or I guess it's 21 days before they get a violation, so it kind of cuts that in thirds, essentially.
Okay, any other questions? All right, Matt, thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, as always. Thank you. So, Sariah, you want to close it out for us?
So, that was a lot of information packed in two hours, so thank you for bearing with us. As the city managers just mentioned, we are done for this work session. We will be bringing back a knock-on-wood balanced proposed budget for you all on May 16th. So super excited about that, and we will definitely take some of the considerations that you all had. Counselor Member Harrison, you'll be happy to see something about transportation in the upcoming budget. So, and of course, building this budget with the community priorities that we heard as part of the survey process, as part of our engagement. So I just thank you all, and, you know, if you have any questions, I did notice some follow-ups. So we will be following up with all of you, whether it's through the city manager's update or otherwise, we'll get back to you all. But thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Good job.